Guys, thank you tonight for being with us. Today is April the 21st, 2020. Our thought for today is in the middle of every difficult, every difficulty lies an opportunity. That's by Albert Einstein. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I ask Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Mason, if you would tonight, please pray for our community. And you know, we definitely are still dealing with COVID-19. And if you will, please pray for our first responders who are dealing with this firsthand tonight. So if you would, keep them in mind, keep them in your thoughts and your prayers. Commissioner Mason, if you would, pray for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this board meeting one more time, God. And we just come thanking you and blessing you and praising you for all that you've done for us and all that you are about to do, God. And God, we know that you are the head over all things and that you are in complete control, God. And we know that even as during this time and during this season of COVID-19, God, God, we ask right now, God, that you look down upon our first responders, God, in the name of Jesus. God, we ask that you cover them with your blood from the crowns of their head to the soles of their feet. God, protect them, God. Put your hedge of protection around them, God, as they go out, God, to help meet the needs of the community. God, we ask that you keep them safe, God. God, we ask that you protect them from our hurt, harm, danger, both seen and unseen, God. God, we know that you are God that has all power in your hand. And you said that where there are two or three gathered in your name, that it is so. And so we declare and decree, God, that you will protect them, God, and that you will keep them safe and that you will bring them home throughout this season, God. We've been asked that you look down upon those that have been negatively impacted, God, that have been affected by this virus. God, I ask right now, God, that you heal their bodies, God. God, help them to recover, God, in the name of Jesus, only like you know how. And God, even those of us that are adhering to the shelter in place, God, we ask that even as we go out to essential services and for essential purposes, God, God, that you will protect us as we go out, God, and bring us back to our homes safely as well. God, we thank you for just being there with us, God. We ask that you continue to touch everyone in Newton County. You got to touch all of our government and elected officials, God, those are our leaders. God, touch each and every citizen, God, God that is represented in this county. God, we thank you for what you've done and what you're about to do. We give you all the kingdom honor and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, sir. Guys, we're gonna go ahead and I know you had an opportunity to look at the agenda today. There are no changes. I seek a motion that we approve this agenda tonight.
So moved. This is Commissioner Mason.
Second, Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you. It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Schultz. All in favor?
Aye from District One.
Aye from District Two.
Aye from District Three.
Aye from District Four.
Commissioner Cowan.
Aye from District Five.
Thank you, sir. If that motion passes five to zero, thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that we let our citizens make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. I will be keeping time with my clock here. You have three minutes to do so. If you will, please state your name and address for the record, please. If you want, if your phone is muted, you may have to hit star six to unmute your phone. You might hit star six to unmute your phone. Thank you. The next item is chairman's report. I just want to take an opportunity to, I guess, say what everybody's been talking about all day. And that we understand that the governor's opening the state back up. He's starting that process. But and that's, he has the right to do so. He's the governor. That's his decision. But I want to encourage citizens of Newton County to make sure that you are doing the best thing that you possibly can to be safe. Make sure your family is being safe. Continue to wash your hands. Continue to wear your mask. Continue to, if you can, be six feet away from the next person. And I just want to encourage us to keep using these precautions that have been put in place by the CDC. We want to make sure that we do everything in our wheelhouse to make sure we keep the people in Newton County safe. So I just want to say that tonight for the chairman's report. Also, also, I want to add in the chairman's report. I want to thank you guys for, again, for partnering with Action Ministries and Newton County School System to provide meals for kids who may not in, who may not get the opportunity to have a meal. I know a lot of kids in our community that depends upon school lunch. And some of the, some of the kids in this community, that's the only lunch that they get. And I want to thank this board for stepping up to the plate and providing meals, providing the funding for the meals that will help this community, help these kids out. And I got a number for you guys, and I'll have more detail. I give more information to you guys. But I do want to give y'all a number tonight, how many kids, how many meals you will actually be providing. And it's an amazing number. That number is 18,000. You will be providing 18,000 meals for kids in this community. And guys, I, I have never seen that done before. I salute you guys for coming together and, and making this happen. It, it just, it's amazing to me. It's amazing to me what, 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 what can happen when people come together for the good of this community. So I am so thankful for this board. It took all of you guys to make this happen. So thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Edwards, for calling me and reminding me that we need to get this done. So guys, I really, really do appreciate you guys. Thank you, Lord, for making sure that we got that check out in a fast manner. So that's all I have tonight for the chairman's report. But I do, again, want to say thank you, and there's a lot of kids in this community that will be fed because of you guys. Thank you. Next, we will have the county manager, managers' report. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be very grateful. I just would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our employees who have been continuing to provide service to, to the citizens of the county. With this, the, the remote working and so forth has gone very well. And again, I just want to say thank you to all of our employees, those who are in the office, especially who are departmental, who are continuing to come in and be there on a regular basis. And all of our employees who are working, rotating schedules, but who are out there to make sure that we do provide all of the needs and services that our citizens have come to know. I'd also would like to just remind everyone to utilize the, utilize our website for COVID-19 updates. We post the latest information on there that we received from CDC and the Department of Public Health. And also, on that note, to make sure that you check the website for one at Newton Rockdale County Health Department as they have made announcements, and I'm sure will continue to make announcements as they set up testing centers for the public. And most recently, there was one at the Georgia International Horse Park. Pardon me. And I'm sure there will be more along the way. But there also have information related to other testing sites within our region. I would also like to note that our projects that we've had underway since before, we had the Shelter in Place Order, Senior Center and Senior Services Center, as well as the Animal Services Building are well underway and are progressing nicely at this time. So, and we will be bringing you a contract at our next meeting for two of the fire stations so that those projects will be able to begin as well. And again, to reiterate what you said, Chairman, to encourage everyone to maintain the social distancing, even though we are able now to do a few more things than we have in the last few weeks, just practice those good, those best practices as we've come to know from the Health Department and from the hospitals. And I'll, and to remember to practice social distancing when you're out in the public. Again, thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Guys, any questions? We got to ask you if you have any questions. Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Lloyd, can you say which fire station that you'll be, we bring a contract on?
We actually are gonna be bringing the contracts for two and four. And the one, the four, we are still in the process of working on the site. But we do have a contractor who has bid based on the building plans that we use for Station Eight. And we feel very comfortable with the bid, as do they, that there would be very minor adjustments that would possibly be needed to the, to the grading and so forth to prepare a site. But we believe we're fairly close on a, on a site at this point. But we do want to get it under contract so that they can begin, so that they can begin to assemble materials and so forth to get the construction.
So, so you're very close on a site for Station Four?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so Station Eight is once off 162, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and that's the one we're, that's the one we're renovating?
Station Two, yes, sir. That's the one we're renovating. We had to do some interior. Station Eight is up on Gum Creek Road.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
I, I, I got you. So guys, we're gonna go and order that way, that way that I don't miss anybody because I want to make sure I missed Commissioner Cowan and Commissioner Henderson last time because they not on video. So let me go and order, and I promise I get to you guys. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lloyd, can you repeat that one more time? Did you say, you said number, Station Number Four is off of Highway 162? And then you said Station Eight was Gum Creek Road?
Yes, so Station Four will be located in District One, most likely on County Road 213. Station Two is on 162. Station Eight is on Gum Creek Road.
Okay, and then is the one on Station Four, is that the one, the new one that we're talking about building?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, and?
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, and then number, Station Number Two and Station Number Eight, those are two we're just kind of remodeling?
No, Two is a remodel, Eight is a new station, and that will be built as well.
And which districts are in Two and Eight?
Eight is District Three, Station Two is District One.
Station Four, District One.
District One, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so Station Two and Station Four is in District One, and then Station Eight is in District Three?
Station Eight is in District Three, Two and Four and One, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schultz?
Oh, I have a phone number for the drive-through testing. Actually, there's not a drive-through testing site in Newton County this week, but the phone number that we call is 770-513-5631 to set up an appointment. And there will be future drive-through testing sites in Newton County. But if you'll call that number, you can have testing without a doctor's order. Also, let's segue back to the fire station. District Three, Station Eight, when will we have the groundbreaking?
I meant, I could get a solid date from you from our project manager, but we anticipate it would probably be in the month of, sometime during June. I think some of it may depend, of course, on what's happening with the virus, with the COVID-19 and what we have in terms of being able to congregate. But I anticipate that we will be doing official groundbreaking probably in June. We actually have done some work on the site, some, a little bit of clearing work to determine some of the challenges that might be on the rear end property. But we'll begin in earnest fairly quickly.
Okay, I know I've had several questions about the exact location. And I just think that, you know, signage is important and a good groundbreaking.
Sure, we'll get a sign up. And for those of the public who are not aware, it is on Gum Creek Road, just north of Gum Creek Landing Subdivision. It's on the left-hand side of the street, the road, rather. There's a large phone box and cable box there right on the next, to the right of way. And generally speaking, the property is located behind that box there. That frontage, the wooded frontage along Gum Creek right there is the subning property.
And if the signage can say your sploß dollars at work?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Schultz. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I want to ask Lord, a question I have for Lord is is that now that we're, we're coming, we're coming out of the shelter in place, is our recreation project that was, that was tentatively, was going to, almost starting to be done? In fact, they brought the equipment over and all this stuff. Are they going back at this point? And going and finishing, cleaning those projects?
I'll need to check with the, the Rec Department Commissioner. They should be, depending on whether they, assuming the contractor is back at work. But I would be glad to verify that with Mr. Turner over at the Rec Department.
And I, I would appreciate that. And one last thing is, let me know when it's time that we can, can me and a few members of the community can come in and sit down with you and, and the chairman. And, and maybe we invite some of the city officials, especially ones who are in law enforcement, so that we can kind of get in front of the curve of, you know, some of this violence that we have in the community. And that's something that the, that my community, my family and the community have been urging me to bring some people together and, and come up with a plan for not only the community in District Four, which is in the city of Covington at present, but for the community at large, and we came up with some ideas and want to say and talk about them and hopefully get somebody to listen so we can implement them. Thank you.
Commissioner Cowan?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Kerr, for that, that report tonight. Next, next on the agenda is our consent agenda. I seek a motion that we approve tonight.
Mr. Chair, this is Nancy Schultz from District Three, and I move for approval.
District One will second.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion, guys? All in favor?
So aye from District One.
Aye from District Two.
Aye from District Three.
Aye from District Four.
Aye from District Five.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Thank you so much. Our next on the agenda is our, is item number nine. Is our monthly finance. Brittany, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Good evening. Tonight, you should have a package in your packet for the March 2020 financial report. And so I'll be reviewing that. So March is month number nine of our fiscal year. So we should be trending around 75% of our revenues and expenditures. So for March, we brought in $3,087,958,000 in revenue. So that puts us at, for the fiscal year, our actual is $64,575,000. That puts us at 90% of our revenues for the year. Our expenditures for the month of March was $6.1 million. Our actual year-to-date is $50,219,000. That puts us at 70% of our expenditures for the year. So we are tracking a little under the 75%. So year-to-date, our total revenues and our total expenditures, our revenues have come in at $14,356,000 over our expenditures, which is to still be considered normal this time of year because we have brought in almost 98% of our tax, our property tax revenue for the year. As far as the enterprise funds go, the water fund is tracking at 79% of their budget and revenues. And they're tracking at 43% of their expenditures. Solid Waste is tracking at 81% of their revenues and 59% of their expenditures. And the Gaithers Fund is tracking at 84% of their revenues and 54% of their expenditures. The 2005 sploß, the only remaining projects that we have there is debt service, and we have $771,000 left in that sploß to pay the remaining '06 admin debt. And we have about two and a half payments left that we can pay out of that sploß. The 2011 sploß, we have $2.2 million left in that. In our main projects, as y'all have been discussing, Station Eight will be funded out of 2011 sploß. And that's really the, the main project that we have left there. The 2017 sploß, for the month of March, we brought in $1,016,347, and that is actually February collections. And so far to date, we are tracking $5.7 million over what our budget and figures were for the 2017 sploß. The entire fee fund balance to date is $1,760,000. And that wraps up my March financial. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you for being here. Guys, any questions? Commissioner Edwards? Anything, Commissioner Edwards?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz?
Sorry about that. So I reached out today to ACCG to get a sense of what the revenue projections were for the state, and they don't have that information yet. But I was curious what, if we've been able to see any trends just recently related to the COVID-19 on our sploß. I know we're behind, we're behind a little bit in terms of getting the, the, the data will be a month behind, but I'm just curious if we're, what the, what we're hearing from sploß collections from either other counties or what we, you might be seeing. I know that, just anecdotally, I believe that they're going to be down somewhat.
Unfortunately, the sales tax revenue, which is our lost and sploß collections, do come from the state. So the last day of the month, so April 30th, we will receive our collections for March. So it will be probably another, probably about another week before we'll have a really good idea. The, because I believe the state has to wait for the revenues to filter in from the businesses. So they probably don't have a good idea as of now either. I haven't heard anything from other counties. So it's probably going to be another week before I'll really know anything.
So I know as a business, I, we submit our sales tax on the 20th. And I believe the, I know that on the 19th, the computers were down. So, but they were back up on the 20th. So I would suspect that it will be a little bit. I'm just curious if, if you've heard anything from other counties that have, you know, just heard from other businesses to determine if they are, if they're going to see lower sploß collections?
I have not. I am in an email list serve with other finance directors. And there's been talks of revenues projections, but there hasn't been anything mentioned, at least as far as the March revenues go. This time of year, our main source of revenues are our lost and sploß collections and also our TAVT collections. And those are looking actually surprisingly well for March. So we did, we did receive pretty much standard of what we're used to seeing for a TAVT tax collection in March.
And TAVT was, was still in excess of where it had, what the projections were?
Um, yeah, so for March, we actually brought in $410,000. And the month before, we had brought in $520,000, but that was a significantly higher month. And then as far as April, we've already seen our April collections for the TAVT tax, and we were trending $497.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Henderson? We'll come back to Commissioner Henderson. We'll come back to Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Cowan?
I, I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson? Thank you. Thank you, Brittany. Brittany, do you want to go ahead and deal with number 10 as well?
Yes, I can. Um, so we have proposed new budget workshop dates, and we are proposing to conduct these things in similar to this. And those have been moved to April 20th, 29th, and 30th. And we're just seeking approval that these dates work for y'all.
Thank you. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Those dates are good with you?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, sir.
Brittany, you, would you, you may want to go into a little more detail on the, with the budget. I think everyone should have, not the budget, but the calendar. I think everyone should have received a copy of your calendar, however they may. But it, but if not, uh, calendar, however they may, but it, but if not, those dates are the dates that we are going to be holding day-long workshops. Uh, so you may want to go into that just a little bit with the Commissioner, if you would, please.
Okay, yeah, not a problem. So the first day that we're looking at would be Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, and this would be a nine-to-five meeting. And this would be where the Norman County Departments are presenting their budgets to you. And then we also have the enterprise funds presenting their budgets as well. On Wednesday, that would be another full-day meeting, which would be nine-to-five. And this would be your constitutional officers, your elected officials and other governing boards, such as, um, go ahead. And then Thursday, April thirtieth, would be a half-day, nine-to-one, and that would be your appropriations. So this also, there's changed the bottom, um, the bottom portion of the budget calendar as well. So we originally had aimed to, to have the budget approved on June sixteenth, and so this is pushing us back to June twenty-third. But that would still be before July first, and we could have a budget passed before the fiscal year starts. Do you mind having any questions?
Guys, you have, thank you, Brittany. Guys, you have any questions? Um, Commissioner, hold on. Commissioner Mason?
No, sir, I don't have any question. But actually, are these going to be the only three days that we're gonna uh, work on the budget? They're all compact into these three days, correct?
Um, well, actually, this is just the budget workshop, so we will also be holding a BOC discussion on May seventh, and then we also will be holding a special call and meeting to present the pro- the proposed budget on May nineteenth.
These dates are, uh, Commissioner Mason, Brittany, you can correct me if I'm wrong. These dates are, um, for them to get opportunity to hear from the department heads, is that correct?
Yes, the first dates in April, those are from the department heads and appropriations.
And a con- and the constitutional office, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Brittany, you made a com- you made mention that the appropriation meeting on Thursday, April thirtieth, was from nine to one, and our calendar says nine to twelve?
Yeah, originally, I thought that we would be able to scrape, squeeze it in between nine to twelve, but once I got to actually fitting everybody in their slots, we would really need to go to twelve fifteen. If there's any discussion, I have that set aside for twelve to one. But if we, if you don't have any discussion that day and you want to discuss the appropriations on the later May seventh meeting, then we can wrap up around twelve fifteen, twelve thirty.
And um, also, nine to five is a long day. Is there a lunch break scheduled in there?
Yes, there is. Um, there is an hour and a half lunch break on the April twenty eighth Tuesday meeting, and there is an hour lunch break on the Wednesday, and there's also fifteen-minute breaks that are um, scheduled in there as well.
And um, last question. Last year, we had each budget was tied to a strategic action item. Will that be the same this year?
They did. Um, the departments did tie back a majority of their requests to strategic action items, and they have been asked to present those items when they are presenting their budget.
And that's been communicated to appropriations as well?
Um, yes, that has been also communicated to them, and I will communicate that once again when I send out my final reminder.
That went very well last year. It really helped us to make sure that we were not going off on tangents, that we were doing exactly what was included in the stakeholder needs assessment. And so I, I would strongly encourage you to send out another notification to them to make sure that they have tied it to a strategic action item.
Yes, I can do that with no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, well, wha- what I wanted to ask, and I guess this question is kind of, is direct to Lloyd. This is about, I'm still looking for where is it, or what, what can it be discussed? It's for the gang test force piece in our budget.
Uh, they, uh, sheriff.
We're funding.
Pardon me?
Uh, funding, you know, it always boils down to dollars and cents, funding.
Well, the, the funding for it, um, the sheriff has included requests for funding in his twenty twenty-one budget request. Um, so assuming that um, we, if he did hire, I think some of the funding would come from general fund, and I believe that there's, there was um, state funding that was intended as well uh, for that uh, for those, uh, for the gang task force. I don't believe it had been acted upon before the legislature went out of session. Um, so I'm gonna assume that that will be brought up when they go back into session. Um, that would be one of the items, but um, some of the funding, if it's in, if those positions are some of the positions that he chooses to, and he wants to have his uh, to fund, then some of them would be funded by the general.
Oh, absolutely. And so um, well, I won't talk too much a- about it, possibly out in public, but, but what I think is, is that, you know, it's something that we as district commissioners need to pay close attention to. Uh, because I think we got a, a lot of gangs. I, I know COVID was very important. But uh, until you have had the opportunity to walk down the street within the past two years and, and possibly see somebody laying out in the street who's deceased, and whereas maybe, and it's me, if I could have acted or persuaded my fellow commissioners to act a little bit faster, then, you know, who knows? I believe that maybe a life could have been spared. And eventually, I know it this way, and it's going to be all over the county. Uh, it's going to be innocent people who are being hurt or shot when they shouldn't have to be. I think we need, we're, we're behind the curve now, and we need, really need to act on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only question I've got is, is for Lloyd. In the uh, budget, are we still going to work on the Spring Hill Park project? I know that was some SPOST money. Um, I don't know where you were on the plans for that.
Well, uh, the, yes, it is a SPOST project. Um, we've not collected all the funds yet for that uh, project. Um, we can start the planning process. We haven't as of yet, um, but um, we can, pardon me. It is possible to start the planning process for that, um, to see how far that, that SPOST, excuse me.
Okay. Okay, as long as, as long as we're working on it, I think we'll be fine. I just want to make sure that we don't forget about it.
Oh, no. Yes, sir.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, uh, Brittany as well. Um, next on the agenda is item number eleven, uh, Public Works requesting BOC to award the historic courthouse parking lot resurfacing, resurfacing uh, project to MHB paving. Uh, Mr. Kerr?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I've asked Chester Plague, our transportation engineer, uh, who is on the line. Um, if Mr. Plague would go ahead and unmute his phone, then I'll pass this on over to him. Chester, you there?
Thank you. Yes, Lloyd. Thank you, Lloyd, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you know, the um, the parking lot behind um, the Mystic Grill for the historic courthouse, the pavement's broken up pretty good, and it needs to be uh, resurfaced. And so I got two quotes uh, on the resurfacing, and um, the Public Works, we're gonna um, patch the really bad spots, and um, I'm proposing to have MHB, um, who does resurfacing the parking lots all the time, to come in and, and um, and resurface it with uh, one inch of OGI, which is the interlayer, and then one inch of topping.
Thank you, Chester. Guys, any questions tonight for Chester? Thank you. I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman?
I'll make a motion to award the um, historic courthouse parking lot resurfacing project to MHB paving in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-six fifty, to be paid out of capital improvement fund.
Second by District One.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
I from District One.
I from District Two.
I from District Three.
I from District Four.
I from District Five.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Guys, let me go back, because I don't know if we um, I guess we didn't, I don't know if we approved that number ten. But we did a lot of discussion. I don't think we approved number ten. Um.
You are correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So I want to go back. Thank you, Megan. I want to go back to make sure we get this approved, uh, and put it, make sure it's in the minutes. Uh, I seek a motion of approval, please.
Mr. Chair, this is Nancy Schultz from District Three. I move for approval.
So move, the ma- Commissioner Mason from District Three, Two. I'm saying, I'm in three, too.
Thank you, sir. It has been motioned, uh, that we approve this um, this calendar by Commissioner Schultz, and it has been seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor?
District One.
I District Two.
I District Three.
I District Four.
I District Five.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Thank you, guys. Um, next is item number twelve, County Manager, discussion and consideration to approve the Cigna healthcare insurance renewal. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in your package, you would have received a um, a summary of our benefits, uh, the cost of our benefits package, uh, our health insurance and dental insurance for this coming year. Um, we had a nine percent increase in our premium. Let's say seven hundred and seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-four, seven hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollar uh, increase. We were, however, to keep, able to keep all of our dental uh, premiums will remain the same. Um, and the uh, the medical insurance, while the premiums did uh, go up uh, somewhat, the, all of the uh, co-pays, the deductibles and the out-of-pockets remain the same. This is the first time in three years that we've been able to do this. And this is a renewal of our existing contract uh, with uh, Cigna. Um, I asked uh, our broker, Mr. Garrett Massey, to be on this call as well. Uh, in the event that you had some particular questions about our insurance or about the policy that, or about, excuse me, the procedure that we use to obtain uh, quotes from uh, Cigna, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Humana, and uh, Bettina as well. Um, and I believe Mr. Massey is on, um, Mr. Massey, if you're there, if you could unmute your phone.
Yes, Lloyd, this is me.
Great. Um, Chairman, I'll, if anyone has any questions of uh, uh, Mr. Massey, then um, I'll leave it back to you to hold the board.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Massey, for being uh, aboard this meeting tonight.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board, county manager.
Thank you. Uh, guys, you have any questions for Mr. Massey tonight?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Oh, oh, okay, one second, guys. Commissioner uh, Edwards?
That is actually for Lloyd. It's to, I want to backtrack on the numbers for one second. So probably seven hundred and seven thousand dollar increase, is that what it is?
Yes, that's right.
What, and that was, what was, what percent increase was that?
Uh, right at nine percent.
Nine percent? Okay, um, so is that, how, how are we, we dealing with that? Are we pa- are we gonna, what's that going to be in terms of the budget, or is that going to be in terms of passing that cost along to the, to the employees? The um, amount that the um, there will be a portion of it that will be passed on to the employees. The employee contributions uh, will remain, the rate will remain the same as it was last year. Um, uh, there is a dollar increase to the, all of the employees uh, for um, as their portion of the insurance premium. Um, uh, but there, we've decided at this point to maintain the contribution rate uh, as it is.
Guys, hey, I'm Max. If you're not, um, if you're not speaking, I'm actually, if you could, unmute your, mute your phones, please. All right. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I guess this is a question for Mr. Massey. Um, I was wanting to know, do, and I don't know if it's even possible to project at this particular point, do we ever foresee a decrease um, versus an increase? Are we able to project that now, or is that just kind of something we never really know? Because we don't know exactly what the claims are going to be from year to year.
That would be one of the factors used. We are faced with the claim factor as well as the census makeup of age, gender, and the population of spouses and family. We monitor the claim reports on a monthly basis. And usually, the month of July and August are artificial months because you have, you have the premium is not being built up. And basically, about uh, September and October, we start to getting a feel for the year. And I periodically notify the county manager of where we are looking at at that particular point in time. And we actually start basing all of our projections after we get the six-month numbers. They finalize on December thirty-first, and I usually get my copy of them January twentieth, and we're able to make decisions moving forward at that time.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you so much, Mr. Massey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz?
So Lloyd, I, I, I'm confused by what you said. You said that the employee contribution will remain the same, but then I thought I heard you say that there was going to be a portion was going to be of the increase was going to be borne by the employees. So maybe I misunderstood that?
I'm sorry. I, I didn't go far enough. The rate of contribution will remain the same. Um, the percentage rate will remain the same. But because there's an increase in the premium, there will also be in, in dollars in the premium. There's also an increase of dollars in the um, contribution that the um, uh, employees make towards the purchase of the, of the insurance. For instance, I, I'll give you a, for instance, um, one of our plans is called the OAP Local Plus, and this is the plan. This is our base plan and the one that we try to, that we encourage most everyone to um, to take part in. Um, and that premium, if you have an employee and family, would go from currently, it's seventy-two dollars uh, bi-weekly to seventy-nine dollars bi-weekly. So that's one, one example. So the rate of contribution, percentage rate does not change, but the dollars have changed.
Okay, that makes sense. And, and then, um, I believe it was last year that we changed, uh, about, um, that, that new coming employees, um, their spouses and their family were, um, were at a different rate in terms of what they paid versus employees that were grandfathered in. Is that correct?
Yes, um, well, it was actually in two thousand seventeen and
Time flies.
No, that's okay. The contribution rate changed for any employees, uh, it's a greater amount for any employees hired after, uh, July first of two thousand seventeen. And those employees that were hired prior, um, their contribution rate is probably is less than the contribution rate for employees hired after two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
Than July of two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I have a, a more of a comment. First of all, I would like to thank our local agent, Mr. Gary Massey. You know, I think it's very important for the employees and, uh, to be, to have someone in the community who lives here in the community, who, who raised their family here in the community and then be able to help them as needed, uh, you know, concern our insurance. Now, it has always been, if I remember, over the years that I've served on the board, that there are more claims that goes in every year, at least from the county perspective, uh, every year than probably the money that goes out. And it has been, really been a, a job negotiating with the different insurance companies and to understand it's about three insurance companies, uh, as far as keeping something for our employees of this affordable. And I just want to just take this opportunity to thank Mr. Massey for his, his hard work as far as keeping the insurance for our employees affordable.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just want to say that I've worked with Gary Massey for twenty-eight something years doing cities insurance. I know he knows exactly what he's doing. He's made a good recommendations to, to me in the past and, uh, everything he's done has always been top-notch and I appreciate him putting this together and I'm sure we got the best um, pricing for the, um, uh, experience that we're having right now. So, uh, feel pretty good about it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Um, Gary, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Uh huh. Go ahead, sir.
Um, Gary, if you could, um, if we could talk just a little bit about that bid process that you went through. I think it's important for the board to, to know how much work was put into that and, and, uh, where that kind of fell out.
Sure. Thank you, sir. As I mentioned, we start getting the hardcore numbers after about six months. And then I arrange a meeting with the County Manager in which, this is where we are. And he and I talk about what our options are and which direction that we think we need to go. Uh, this year, we felt like we needed to do a full-fledged because our loss experience was not, not that great. And most years, we'd like to get some competitive bids, but we felt it was imperative this year. We, uh, contacted, I contacted Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Humana and Aetna and sent them all the entire package, which includes the census, all the current loss information, a copy of all our plans, and we asked for the, uh, renewal process on it. The packages went out in January and, uh, were due back in on a as-is renewal in March. And basically, in March, uh, I notified the County Manager of where we are and I refer to it as the worst-case scenario. From that point on, it becomes responsibility that I have to negotiate the best plan, the best process that to protect the integrity of the plan for the employees and protect the budget for the board. Uh, after we got the initial ones in, uh, we felt we had a true number because the four companies were in, were within percentage points of each other. So then we decided that, uh, we were in the middle of the coronavirus shelter in place and the, um, uh, six feet social distancing. So we had to make a shift and we uh, asked for two different proposals from each one. There was a cha, I send them periodic claim data. They get, uh, the December numbers and then when the January numbers are there, I pass those on. And then when the February numbers come in, they stay up to date on the claims so that everyone has the same information as well as the incumbent carrier. When we did this, we had a slight, uh, factor come up in the claims. So we were able to ask for a as-is renewal reconsideration based on new information. And we also asked for, uh, some alternatives that we digested and looked at. We invited all four representatives to meet personally and go over what they thought was their best and final offer. And once that was finished, uh, I did the grading process, uh, made my recommendation to the County Manager. And the, the notes are there. Everyone felt that it was a very fair process. I reconfirmed all the numbers. They all had the opportunity to have a face-to-face meeting and I think it was a good process. And I do believe we got the best that we could get. Uh, after the final numbers, we were able to make a couple of negotiations. One on the deductible for brand-name prescriptions and another on the dental insurance where we enhanced the payout on it as well. So basically, uh, the process started in early January and finished up last week.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, you have anything else, Mr. Kerr?
Sorry, no, uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Massey. Uh, you, you always working hard for, for, uh, the employees here in Newton County. So, uh, we definitely want to say thank you. Uh, not only that, you're a great community partner. You always around in the community doing different things. So we greatly appreciate you, uh, and, and what you have, uh, was able to accomplish for, for our employees. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, guys, I think a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the, um, Cigna Health Insurance Renewal.
Second, this is Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. Uh, it had been motion by Commissioner Cowan, um, and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye from District One.
Aye from District Two.
Aye from District Three.
Aye, Aye from District Four.
Aye from District Five.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mason for being, I mean, Mr. Massey for being here with us tonight. Again, we greatly appreciate you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board, County Manager, and I'll be, I'll be off the phone now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Guys, uh, I want to take just a second to take, um, um, Chairman's, uh, point of privilege tonight. Um, I did forget about, um, thirteen A, thirteen A. Uh, I want to amend it. Well, I just wanted to, to use Chairman's, um, privilege tonight to add, um, social distanc, distancing, um, to the agenda. Uh, there's a lot of pastors and a lot of community leaders that are on the phone tonight. Um, that want to know what the county is gonna, uh, what, what the county is gonna do about, um, about opening up, you know, going back to trying to open up the state. Um, and I've spoken to some of them today. Um, and I, and I think they want to hear, hear what the commissioners, uh, has, has to say about this. So I spoke to some today and I told them, you know, basically, we, you know, the governor supersedes anything that we do, um, locally in the county. Um, but for the county offices, we are planning on, um, staying close to the public for another two weeks. Um, I just want to hear you guys, hear your guys' thoughts on it. Let them hear you, hear your thoughts on it as well. Yes, Mr. Edwards?
Well, I, I agree that staying in line with what the governor, uh, is proposing and going so far as to say some type of phased approach that maybe that we, we, we do with the county, um. I, I don't know. I've, I've, I've heard so, I've got so much, gotten so much data uh, and then so much opinion, and then you've gotten a lot of, got a, you've got a lot of emotion. I think it would probably be wise if we have survived to this point as a county with our services, our employees, that um, two more weeks is, is not going to hurt. I, I tend to err on the side of caution anyway. So, um, I think, I think I can support that, that, that notion.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have gotten a lot of different feedback. Um, I've gotten feedback that this may not be the best idea at this particular time. Um, because we haven't really seen a peak at this point, uh, to really know how many people have been affected and if it's continuing to spread or not. Um, I've also heard that, you know, citizens are kind of fine either way. Um, and then I've also heard from citizens that say that they think this is an excellent idea. Um, that we probably, you know, I think what the governor is saying to open back up the state is great. But what they're gonna do, uh, and those people that are kind of good either way and those people that are, or those citizens that think this is a great idea, um, they're kind of taking their own personal responsibility, you know, with the social distancing and saying, you know, yes, our businesses need to be back open because they need to survive through this. And so it's a good idea to kind of get those businesses going back again, but from a personal citizen perspective, you know, they are going to still kind of maintain their social distancing, uh, still with their masks, still do the things that we've kind of been doing, um, previously.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Shoals?
So my internet went out right in the middle of all of this and I had to log back in via phone. So I missed all of the discussions. I apologize. Um, would it be possible to come back to me? Because I, I feel like I've kind of gotten, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit discombobulated since my internet went out.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we, what you were saying, at least we took it was about the churches and, and whether or not they could, um, uh, congregate within their churches. And, and what I'm, you know, I tell you what I believe is that most people, especially old folks like me, you know, talk about nobody else, like me, are just really kind of scared to death to go out and congregate with a whole lot of people at this point, especially since there haven't been, from all, what I've heard from our governor, our great governor, Mr. Brian Kemp, is that it has not peaked as of yet. So what that may mean is that it's still, some people who may have the virus don't have any symptoms, still may be breathing on you or breathing around you. It may give it to one of us who may have some of those underlying issues. And, you know, and our days upon this, this side may be limited. So I think right now, and, and I, I think I, 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 I agree with, um, Commissioner Mason, Reverend Mason, I agree in, in, in Lord. Is that maybe right now that we need to, um, instand, that we need to just follow what we're doing. Even though anything the governor says supersedes us, we can tell them, say, well, stay in place, shelter in place. It don't mean they stay sheltered in place. It mean that they can act the way the governor acts. We, with nothing we really can do about it. But anybody that's got a little bit of common sense knows this thing is not over. There could be a second wave. And I think it would be anybody who been keeping up with it a little bit, and we all should keep up with it, uh, will, will want to congregate in a close quarter with other people whom you, who may have the virus and don't even know it. I think if you want to go to church, continue to go in your car. Let the preacher come out and bless you. Or continue, continue to go in the car like it's Stone Mountain and let the, let the preacher come out and marry you. But until we get a, a cap, until it peaks out and it maybe start going down, I think we, there should be area of caution on all of us. And then we gotta look at where it may be most be at. Look at the statistics now, in this republic. There's been more people, uh, poor folks of color who have seemed to have got contracted disease and died from because of the only underlying issues, what they, what they said. Has been diabetes, has been high blood pressure, uh, and, and, and stuff like that. It's common. Obesity is common in this community in a wide-scale basis. So I think we, there should still be an area of caution on this as, as, as we, uh, what we tell people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think the question is whether or not churches should, uh, not worry about the social distancing anymore. Is that correct? Um, my personal opinion is I'd rather be safe than sorry. And I agree with Commissioner Henderson and some other of the commissioners. I don't think this thing is over yet. Uh, I think the governor is doing his best to try to establish businesses. But he's always emphasized social distancing too. And unfortunately, if we could just go just, just a couple more weeks, I think we'll see, uh, this thing moving on out of here. Um, I think we just need, I think we just need to hold where we are. Just, just tell folks, you know, please don't abide by the social distance.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Shoals, you ready? Or you want me to go to Mr. Kerr?
No, I'm, I'm good now. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. You know, if you look, if we look historically at where the, uh, the hotspots started, they started in Rome, in Bartow County and in Dougherty County. And they started with funerals and churches. And so I think that we've got to be really careful because in those communities, there was, there has been devastation. I am a firm believer that we, this isn't, we're not through this yet. And I, you know, I'm just not sure how you implement six-foot distancing in a, throughout your entire church community. I believe that we need to be patient. And let's see how this first rollout of phase one works. Uh, you know, I think that I had a conversation today with Dr. Arona, which was a great conversation. But I just still believe that we need to proceed with caution. And we need to remember that the greatest, the greatest concentration of hotspots in rural, started in some rural counties with churches and funerals. And we certainly don't want to be a hotspot. And we certainly don't want to get notoriety because we jumped back in and, and gave that kind of, um, uh, that kind of indication that it was okay to, to move quickly with, with, um, not watching the social distancing. I think too, if you look at the, um, the, or the executive order that was, that the governor gave yesterday, there's still twenty regular, or twenty, um, steps that have to be taken. And, um, I think it's really important that we, um, that we emphasize the fact that you have to follow through with all twenty of those steps. And a lot of them are, um, it's, it's not going to be easy to jump right in and implement those twenty steps. So my viewpoint is let's just take a little bit of time. So, my viewpoint is, let's just take a little bit of time, let's just proceed with caution. And I would say, wait at least two weeks or perhaps, not before the first of May.
Thank you. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I think I would, I agree with a lot of the points that have been made earlier by the, earlier by the commissioners. I think at this time, you know, even the president's plan moving even into Phase Three, there's still a caution to maintain that social distancing and not to gather in extremely large crowds. You know, having said that, I know how, what a large part that our local church community here. And so, you know, it's, I think it's important that everything is done most, as much as possible can be done to keep people connected is what's gonna be important here. But I would echo the need for caution. And that perhaps the best thing to do at this point would be to continue utilizing the technology that we have to provide the message and services to the people, but to refrain from gathering because of the difficulties in maintaining, you know, in maintaining that. Because it is difficult if going in and out of a building, parking lot, all over the scene. So, I think probably at this point, caution would be, would be the best form of action. And perhaps to see, things may change drastically as Commissioner Schultz has mentioned in the next two weeks. I think Commissioner Henderson made an excellent point. You know, go directly to God and let the priest or the minister bless you to exercise caution. So, I think that's probably will be, would be the best course of action at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I just wanted to make sure, several pastors reached out to me and I wanted to make sure that they got an opportunity. They wanted to hear from the commissioner, so they got an opportunity tonight to hear from you guys. So, thank you, thank you, and thank you. Next on agenda is an executive session item, item number 13. We'll be going in executive session for land, I think it's land purchasing.
And disposal, please. And land disposal, please.
Okay, land disposal. I'm sorry. Thank you, county attorney. So we will be putting you guys in a waiting room. We will take a vote when we come out. We will take a vote when we come out. So we will be putting you guys in a waiting room. I seek a motion that we move into executive session.
A move by District One.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards that we move into executive session and second by Commissioner, I think, Mason. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, District One.
Aye, District Two.
Aye, District Three.
Aye, District Four.
Aye, District Five.
We are in executive session. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Father Joe. Guys, we are back in our regular meeting tonight. We are dealing with item number 13. Consideration of proposed annexation of parcel 133-003E and 133-003G on Highway 278 by the City of Social Circle. We will not be voting tonight. The county do not oppose of this annexation. So then, therefore, there's no need for us to take a vote tonight. The county do not oppose of this annexation. Thank you. Next is item number 14. I was zoning tonight. There's been a request that these zonings be tabled until 5/19/2020. I seek a motion that we table this until then so we can allow for public hearing purposes.
Chairman, this is District One. Commissioner Stan Edwards, I make a motion that we table until the next scheduled meeting. Item number 14 on the agenda.
District Three, Commissioner Schultz, a second.
Commissioner Edwards, can I get you to amend your motion to the 5/19 meeting? Thank you, sir, please.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table item 14 of our agenda until May 19th meeting, regular meeting.
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor?
District One is a aye.
District Two is an aye.
District Three is an aye.
District Four is aye. District Five is aye.
Thank you. Pastor's five, he wrote that this, that these amendments be tabled until 5/19/2020, board meeting. Next on agenda is item number 15. Alcohol license, first reading, neighbors market Covington, 14656 Brown Bridge Road, Covington, Georgia 316, Sabuden, S. Saria, District Two, first reading. Thank you. Next is item number 16, will be citizens comment. This opportunity to we let citizens make comments. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. On mute your phone, hit star six, and I will be keeping the time limit over here. You may do so now.
Hi, this is Sarah Doby. You know I live at 135 Hunter Ridge Drive. And I want to make a comment on the governor's, I think, untimely opening up of businesses. I think we will all be much safer if we stay in our homes except for going out for necessities like prescriptions and groceries. I think our governor has made Georgia one of the fools of the country at the moment. And I think he will regret this. People who will go out and do things at a closer distance are putting their lives in jeopardy. I certainly hope they don't go home to their grandmas or great aunts because we deserve to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. That portion of our meeting is closed. Next we have Commissioner, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I want to make mention of the Y Friday. A couple of Fridays ago, I believe it was just after our last meeting, I had the opportunity to volunteer with the Y. They are in coordination with the school system to identify needy neighborhoods in terms of feeding the children. And I know that week, they fed approximately, they handed out approximately a thousand meals. And I would be surprised if that was not the case last week, if not more. So, and on top of that, they're handing out meals, meal packs for the weekend on Fridays. So, that is handled by, via donations to the Covington Y. They're doing a tremendous job. Lily Cap and her team is, to be commended, just like Action Ministries and just like other, many, many other organizations in our community that are stepping up to feed the kids. It's just amazing to see what's going on. And I was privileged enough for that ride along, that, just that particular Friday. And it was an unreal experience. So I just wanted to give those kudos to our community partners. But I wanted to, I'll shift gears and I'll go into our budget, our upcoming budget. I heard from the governor's budget office this morning that they're projecting, because of the COVID-19, they're projecting a $4 billion decrease in revenues for the state. I don't know how that will translate for our counties, particularly Newton County. And I don't know, I think, I would, I would think that we have to be prepared, not only for a sales tax decrease, but what has, what has COVID-19 done to our, what will it do to our property assessments? And where we are in terms of our best guess back in February, I know we try to estimate in February of where our revenues, our property, our property values will be. What does that do to our upcoming budget? I would think that has a significant impact. And I don't know how we understand or how we come about the knowledge of doing those estimates. I just don't know. You know, you look around and you've got to know that the current SPOST in March and April and probably into May is going to be less than anticipated. You've got to understand that people have lost their jobs and can't, will not be able to pay their property taxes, no matter where their assessments are or where their assessments will be when they come out, what, summer, this summer. So, I think we have to be real careful, Lloyd, in planning for our next budget. I just, I'm not sure how you do it right now, to be honest with you. We've got, we've got these uncertainties we're facing and I just don't know. You know, the revenue didn't increase. So, you know, at best, I think you could hope for a moderate decrease. So, I would, I'm of the opinion that we have to look at cutting our budget and we have to look at chopping it right now. So, I don't know what that, I don't know what that comes down to. I don't know what that comes down to in numbers. But I, slashing our budget now could be some less difficult situations in the future. So, we are where we are. I mean, we're no different than businesses. So, we're, I believe we're gonna see a decrease in our revenues and I believe we have to plan accordingly. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Also, I'm glad you said that about the Y. The Y are looking for donations. They look for food donations, plastic baggies and drinks, guys, to keep that in mind. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to kind of just go back to the whole governor's order with opening the state back up. I believe, you know, he did what he felt is best for the state. I think that I'm happy that we, as a local board, has decided that it may not be the best for our citizens and that we want to still continue social distancing. So I was happy to hear that we were in agreement and on the same accord by doing everything we can on a local level to really let our citizens know that we care about them and that we want to do everything we can to protect them. And we recognize and understand that, you know, this thing has not reached its peak as of yet. And so we want to continue to do everything we can on a local level to really protect our citizens and let them know that we do want to focus on that continued social distancing, at least for a couple of weeks or so, so that we can try to do our best to get through this. I also wanted to touch bases earlier in the meeting. We talked about, Commissioner Cowan had brought up and Lloyd was discussing the whole Spring Hill project. I did have a conversation with Mr. Johnson the other day. And he's been having conversations with citizens in the Spring Hill area. And from what they're saying, now they don't want a park or recreational facility there. What they are proposing, Lloyd, and I guess we can all talk about it a little bit later, but what they're proposing now is instead of having a park or recreation, I think they have a meeting facility in the Spring Hill area. They may have a space already there. And what they would like to do is take the monies that we have from SPOST and maybe rebuild that meeting space there so that they can at least have that meeting space there. So I don't know how, what the expense or cost would be to make that happen. But I guess taking those dollars and instead of making a park or recreational facility, look at revitalizing and refurbishing the meeting building or meeting facility that they already have there so that they can have another meeting space outside of the actual churches when they do meet. So I wanted to kind of bring that up as well. And maybe that's something we can, maybe Commissioner Cowan and Lloyd and I can get together to kind of discuss. I know Mr. Johnson is gonna go back and talk to the citizens even more to kind of see if this is something that they really want to engage in, the majority of them, and kind of move forward from there. But that's all I had. Everybody, please, please be safe. Wear your masks, practice your social distancing. I am a firm believer that this too shall pass and we're gonna get through this. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see you as timing me.
I was about to text you, brother. I was about to text you. Commissioner Schultz, I was about to text you, man.
I just want to say regarding what Commissioner Mason said about the Spring Hill Park, I think we just need to make sure that we look at the SPOST language because it was added to the SPOST project, project list. So just, we need to make sure that we're consistent with that SPOST language. I also want to say that I've had a lot of individuals reach out to me about food that are not children. They're older individuals who have not, have needed to access food pantries. There are food pantries at the First United Methodist Covington Church. And that food pantry is on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And there's a food pantry at Willing Helpers on Brown Bridge Road on Tuesday and Thursday. And then Springfield Baptist Church also has a food pantry. And we will need to email or make a phone call if you want to access the food pantry at Springfield Baptist. But I do have a flyer. Unfortunately, I had to go back to my phone. I don't know what's going on with my internet tonight. But I can provide you the flyer that has all the information with the times and the addresses and the phone numbers. Also Harvest Baptist on 212 has a food pantry as well. Something that I am confused about, and I did reach out to some attorneys with some other counties today, but something that I'm concerned, confused about is that when Dr. Burks... Dr. Burks from the President's Task Force references governors and mayors being able to monitor what's going on in their communities, she specifically says that mayors need to be given the leeway to do what is necessary for their communities. Now I realize that our, the executive order, the previous executive order and the current executive order stipulate that local governments cannot preempt the governor's orders, but I think that it's important that if there are hotspots in areas that, I mean, you look at Phoebe Putney in Dougherty County, and you look at Rome and Bartow County, there are areas throughout the state that have specific hotspots. Hopefully we won't, we will avoid that, but if, if, for example, as we move forward with this phase one, we were to see additional cases, I think that it's important that we have a plan to be able to intervene or ask, ask the governor how we as a local community can protect our community, even if statewide those protections don't need to be in place. So I would like to ask our, our attorneys to take a look at that and see what we have at our disposal to be able to react in, if need be.
Thank you, Commissioner Schultz. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If my memory, if my memory serves me right, a few months ago, maybe about a little over a year ago, we were talking about our fund, our reserve cash for emergencies, and I think at one point we was also, we were happy, the commission were happy, said, hey, we, said, we, we building this fund up. And then I can think of more recently, what we did, start spending, everything, everything we needed, we spending, and you know, everybody stood up, and I know especially, especially Commissioner Schultz, she stood up, she said, well, we got to have it, that's the problem, and, and she was just like a preacher in a pulpit. And that was the reason why we were saving the money, was for emergencies. So when, we didn't know it then, but when the COVID nineteen would come and it adversely affect our county, we had cash that we could build into, take from, to help us with these emergencies. And so, you know, and I don't know exactly what we had, the exact number, or what we can do, but we have really just been digging into that, and it's typical, and I'm just, you know, just, just typically a board, what do we do when you have a certain amount of reserve cash, we would typically dig into it and just leave, instead of leaving it alone until we actually need it, and it's my understanding that you need at least two to three months of operational expense in case of emergency, so the county could run. And so, and I know, I know hard times are coming for the county, and so, but, you know, I pray and trust that it's the will of God, that we're, that we're gonna make through this, we're gonna make it through, and we're gonna continue to practice social distance, we're gonna continue to not get in large gatherings, regardless of who tell, anybody can tell me to do something, that don't make, that don't make us do it here in New York County, we know what to do, especially ones who have, have been around a while, and we know that, you know, we can do things that can adversely hurt other people in the community. And so, but if we all join together and work together, we get past this, we get past maybe a possible budget that we're gonna need to figure out a way to manage, we're gonna get past it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan.
I don't have any comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Curry, have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I just have one thing if I could adult everybody for just a minute. Our oldest, Brandon, who's thirty-eight, is having surgery tomorrow, he's had colon cancer, and they're gonna be removing a section of his colon, small bowel, and so I just would ask you to keep him, and particularly my wife, and keep us in your prayers and, and thoughts as he goes through this surgery. He's been through the chemotherapy as well, and so they just went ahead and scheduled him for surgery tomorrow, and he'll be in Emory Hospital, unfortunately, we can't be there with him because of the virus and all, but, but anyway, if you will, just keep us in your thoughts and prayers, thank you very much.
Thank you. What's his name again?
Brandon.
Brandon, okay. Thank you, sir. Guys, first off, I got just a couple of things, and I'll be quick. When we look at our community, we, we see that our community has about three people who have, I think three people who have lost their life. And that number is so much greater throughout our state. You know, the governor has the authority to, to, you know, open up the state of Georgia, but I want to, I want to ask guys, if you can, please, ma'am, please, sir, again, that we kind of stick with the rules and, and stick with the, the things that have been put in place from the CDC, that we follow those guidelines still, and let's try to make sure we keep our community safe. You know, it just, you know, I don't know how, how you go to someone's house and, and knock on their door or make a phone call, make a phone call now, and, and to let someone know that they, their loved one has, has had, uh, the cause of this, this virus, that's such, that's such a devastating thing. So I want to make sure we do everything we possibly can, make sure we keep practicing, put it, keep practicing, put it in safety precautions, make sure we wash our hands, make that we keep, make sure we get, clean our sanitizer, make sure we put on our mask, make sure we stay six feet away, do those things. Also, before we go tonight, there's a pastor that came and prayed for our community, Jerry Stokes, Pastor Stokes, he planted a church in Covington, called the Gathering Spot. He, he caught the virus, he caught COVID nineteen, and he was in pretty, pretty bad shape for a while, he was in pretty bad shape while, he has now been released and at, and at home. And I'm gonna do things just a little different tonight, I want to go and pray for Brandon tonight, we're gonna pray for him before we dismiss, but please, ma'am, please, sir, keep, keep doing the things that have worked this far, make sure you stay safe, make sure you keep checking on your loved ones, make sure they stay, they stay doing the things that will keep them safe. But we just, we're gonna say a quick word of prayer for Mr. Brandon and Pastor Stokes tonight, and then we'll be dismissed. Father, I thank you so much, Lord, you're so great and you're so kind and you're so just. Father, I pray for Brandon tonight as he get ready to go, as he get ready to go for surgery, Lord, and I pray that you touch, I pray, I pray that you heal, Lord, and I pray that you deliver him through this situation, God, I pray that you touch everyone that has to come in contact with him, every doctor, God, every nurse, anybody that comes his way, I pray that you touch him now, give, give him guidance, lead, lead them, God, give him understanding, God, and Lord, I pray that you protect him right now. Father, also pray for Pastor Stokes, one of your, one of your preachers came here to this courthouse where I sit now and pray for our community. Now, God, he's in need of prayer, and we pray as a community for him, God, we lift him up to you, we pray for him, God, that you touch, heal, and deliver him as well, God, and Lord, we believe that you can do all of this, we believe that you will do this, Father, we thank you right now, in your son Jesus' name we pray, amen. God, I seek a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Thank you.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor?
District One is a aye.
District Two is an aye.
District Three is an aye.
District Four is a aye.
District Five is an aye.
Thank you, guys, we are adjourned, y'all have a great night.
Thanks, everybody have a good night.
Thank you.